All right. So we want to welcome everyone out to Meet the Candidates hosted by the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce. My name is Jason Eads and I'm the Vice President of the Chamber, and I'll be your moderator this evening. I want to start by thanking the candidates for taking their time out of their schedules, their busy schedules, taking time to come and answer questions and to promote what they need to promote, their campaign, and to give information to you guys, you guys, the voters. And I think that is so important. As I look over the crowd tonight, it's really cool to see a lot of faces. And I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that you came just to try those chocolate fudge brownies. I know. There's no doubt in my mind. So I'm really thankful that we have a bunch. I'm really thankful that I've already put mine away for the evening, although I'm going to eat it later. And you're more than welcome to try those. So appreciate that. I also want to thank you, the guys who are attending, whether you're physically here or whether you're virtually. So we've been running this now live on Facebook, and we're trying a few things out new tonight. So hopefully that goes well, and hopefully those online participants can participate just as you guys do physically. Allow me to go over the rules for tonight. I think it's important that these rules will help us to be fair to everyone participating, not just those answering questions, but also those in the audience, too. Snacks and drinks are going to be in the back. So I just out-talked about those fabulous brownies. They are in the back. At any time you want to grab those, you're more than welcome to. Bring them back to your seat. And I do see our candidates have already grabbed a drink. And if any time they need to, if they need to get and grab one, they're more than welcome to. Please make sure to take your cell phones out, and we encourage you to put them on silent. That way, we can give the respect due to those answering questions and responding accordingly. We also know you've got to necessarily be on contact, or whatever the case may be. So just do it considerably. So tonight, we're going to start with introductions for each of the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statements. Then, we're going to move to questions, questions from the audience and from our own online participants. And then each question will have one minute to answer those questions that are directed towards them. If a rebuttal is needed, each candidate will also have a minute to respond. Then, we will have closing statements, and each candidate will also have two minutes for those closing statements. During the course of our event, I would encourage each candidate to be as civil as possible. And I'm sure that we're going to have no problems with that. It's about getting information out this evening. It is important for West Virginians to be informed and to make right choices. And really and truthfully, that's why the Chamber of Commerce has an event like this, Meet the Candidates. It's about getting information about the people who are running to the voters so that we can be educated to know who to vote for. And that's really what tonight's all about. So hopefully, we can stay in those. All right. I want to introduce one person. This is going to be the most important person for this evening, and it's our timekeeper. She's going to make sure that the rules are going to be upheld, and time is going to be of essence. So that is Ms. Lisa Johnson, and she's right in the middle of the room. Ms. Lisa has a card and a flag. First is a yellow card. That card signifies that you have 15 seconds remaining on the time limit that you have. So when you see that card, candidates, you know you have 15 seconds. Second thing she has is a big red flag. Now, that does not mean go. That means stop. Exactly. See, y'all are smart. You guys have this. Red flag means you're out of time, and that means that we need to move to the next question. So let's make sure we're aware of all those and those times. Next is Ms. Elizabeth. Elizabeth is our mic runner. She's going to be the one that's kind of going to go back and forth. And when she brings those mics to each candidate, make sure you speak and speak well into the mic so that everyone can hear you. And then, when you're done in your time limit and you see that red flag, she's going to come and snag it from you. To the audience, you have pens and papers right there in front of you. If you would like to ask a question, some of you already have started asking questions, just jot that question down legibly, as much legibly as possible. And then, if you'll just raise your hand up, we have question gatherers. They'll come and gather that in baskets, and then they'll bring it to you. For our online folks that are watching, if you would just type your questions in the comments, we have somebody watching those comments, and then hopefully, those questions can be asked. It's going to be a long evening. I've already seen lots of pieces of paper over there in that basket. I almost guarantee you that we are not going to get to every question. If we do not get to your question, you are more than welcome to ask that candidate right directly afterwards at our little informal meet and greet. You're more than welcome to. It's nothing personal. It's just trying to get to all of them sometimes is difficult. So make sure that we continue to get those questions. That is so important. All right. Also, we'll introduce just a few different guests that's helped volunteering this evening. The first is the Executive Director of the Somersville Arena and Conference Center, Ms. Mary Ann Taylor. Ms. Mary Ann Taylor is going to help us vet some questions. She's over to my right, and we appreciate her giving of her time and doing, well, the job of vetting those questions. If you are in the Chamber, the Somersville Chamber, please rise. Go ahead. You can stand up for us, board members. We appreciate you. Thank you for your participation tonight. These are all your volunteers, and they're all going to be doing different jobs and doing different things. So we appreciate you. So tonight, our introductions are going to begin, and those introductions are going to go from right, from my right, to my left. So it's going to start all the way over with Mr. Lloyd, and it's going to work its way over here. So introductions, candidates, you have two minutes, and you get the yellow card and the red flag, and then we'll continue. So, opening statements. Make sure, candidates, that you state your name and what you are running for. So make sure you state your name and what you are running for, and then continue with your opening statements. So let us begin. To Commissioner Lloyd Atkins.
Hello. I'm Dr. Lloyd Atkins from Richwood, West Virginia. I'm running for reelection as a county commissioner. I moved to this county quite a few years ago to serve as a health care provider here. And after serving as a health care provider for about 25 years, I was asked by several of my patients to run for an elected position in the county. For the last 18 years, I've been elected official here, 12 as a Board of Education member and six as a commissioner. And thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Next is candidate Gary Roberts.
Good evening. My name is Gary Roberts, and I'll be running for Nicholas County Commissioner this year. First off, I'd like to thank everybody in attendance tonight, both on-site and virtually. And it's an honor and a privilege to have tonight to introduce myself to you guys. A lot of you folks know me, some don't. I want to share a little bit about who I am and what I stand for. Secondly, I'd like to give a big thank you once again to the Somersville Area Chamber for hosting this event tonight. It's very important. I'd like to tell you a little bit about my background. I'm a Nicholas County native and a proud product of Nicholas County Public Education System. After graduating in 1990, I chose to serve six years in the United States Marine Corps, and I extended that two more years by working for Raytheon Systems as a government contractor. And then, I entered 11 years in the telecommunications arena, starting as a frontline technician and clawing my way up to the top as a regional manager with seven states, 84 employees, and almost over $2 million in company assets. In the telecommunications business, they began to boom through mergers. My company was bought out and it gave me a nice severance package and opportunity to return back home, when it was basically a lifelong goal of mine to come back. My dream has always been to come back here and raise my kids in the same county I was raised in and in the same facet and assets that I was raised in. Unfortunately, the county's not exactly where it was when I left. I'd like to get that back on track. Speaking of children, I'm a proud father of three boys. My oldest is currently serving his tour of active duty in the United States Marine Corps. I hope the other two do as well. My youngest has enrolled in the Nicholas County Public School System, one being he's a junior in high school and plays baseball, and my other's a sixth grader who will actually be in Morgantown this Friday, serving Nicholas County and representing them in the state level Math Field Day. Mr. Noah back here. Some highlights of my recent past include I've provided direct management to several new businesses in the Nicholas County area, some of that through social media. I've branded my name, if you guys have seen my videos, as one of integrity, honesty, and trustworthiness. I've helped multiple startup companies in Nicholas County, and I've personally licensed and trademarked motorcycle route driving tourism into the area. And my biggest goal here is transparency with the tax dollars. I want you guys to know where your money's being spent, where it goes, and how it's being divvied out within the county. And I think transparency is going to be the key to bringing the county back to its whole again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Next, to the left, is candidate Libby Kaufman.
Hi. My name is Libby Kaufman, and I'm running for the Nicholas County Board of Education for reelection to, I'm in the Cherry District. I've been married to my husband Gary for going on 44 years. We have two children, five grandchildren. That's one of the reasons why I decided to run for the Board four years ago. I was asked if I would run. I also was a victim of the floods in Birch River. We lost our church, we lost our business, and so I felt that loss that we got from that flood, and it was just devastating. I really wanted to help out the children in our county. I think education is very important, so I was just to ask that you consider me for reelection to the Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Next, candidate Fred Amick.
Hello. I'm Fred Amick, and I'm asking you to reelect me to the Board of Education. We have some unfinished business to do. But before that, I'll give you a little background on me. Most of you know me. I've been a teacher, principal for 40 years. I'm married to a lovely Sue Amick. We just celebrated in January, January the 1st, I tried to pick things so you could remember them. 50 years. Have two, somebody told me she looked like my daughter back there, but she's, my daughter's over here. I have one daughter, she is a doctor of pharmacy, one son, he is a lawyer. I live at Levesey, and I'm a member of the New Prospect Baptist Church. And let's get the job done. Rest of you know me. We've got work to do. We've got a plan. Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. And last is candidate Phil Berry.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you out. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have been in education for, serving in one way or another, for about 55 years. Lived on both sides of the county, taught on both sides of the county, enjoyed both sides of the county. I am running again for the Board of Education because of the kids. They're the reason we're here. Anything we can do to help a child is the best thing we can do while we're here on Earth. So with that in mind, I'm here running again, and it's good to see everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. All right. Now we enter our question time, and these questions, again, are going to be from the audience or online viewers, and we'll do our best. So some of these are going to be directed at individuals, some of them are going to be directed at the full left side and the full right side, however that goes. Okay. So our first question comes to Commissioner Lloyd Atkins. And the question is, what have you done to reunify the county throughout the Nicholas County school controversy?
You know, this is a very good question. The county has had major issues, and it all comes about by a lack of communication. And that's what started this issue. And I tried to settle the whole thing to start with by meeting with Gus and proposing to just do a high school, middle school career tech on each end. It is one of these things that, it's going to take more than one person to settle this, okay? It's going to take the people together that will get this done. But what actually happens here is fairness is where it all comes in at. When everyone is treated fairly, then we'll get along good, okay? That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. This question is for all of the BOE candidates, so you'll each have a time to respond. Again, those one minutes, or one minute, excuse me. What steps can be taken to close the education gap caused by COVID-19?
Well, I will say that this board has, we have allotted money to go, from the cares money, to go to after-school programs and summer programs to help catch the kids up for the loss that they have with face-to-face time with their teachers. I think that's one of the most important things that we can do. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Fred?
Do you repeat the question?
Certainly.
Don't you start yet.
What steps can be taken to close the education gap caused by COVID-19?
Well, first of all, we've already, we took steps. We have various programs. We have hired three counselors, six other workers, health care workers, to work with families that have issues. We're just, and our teachers, they have been fantastic. They have worked their, and the support staff, it's just, we, when we get together, we just talk about that, how they have helped us. And keep in mind, Nicholas County had two schools of excellence, and our students were not in the group of 18 counties that they scored below the acceptable level. Even with COVID, this COVID has been a nightmare. We all know that. But we took steps and we worked as a team. Oh, there, she stopped me. I was just getting started.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. All right. Mr. Berry?
Well, in the beginning, we were one of the first counties to buy and supply our students with computers, little computers. But anyway, that was a way we could communicate with them while everybody was out of school. They still have those, and they're still in use. Far as presently, we can monitor progress, watch tests closely, and see which direction we're going. I believe we're going in the right direction. There's always, always you can do better, and it's a work in progress.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Now, we'll stay on the BOE side. And we'll ask this question, and if you want to respond to that, you can respond, and if you don't want to respond, you don't have to. How about that? Is the water system capable of handling the new schools in Richwood?
I'll answer that. I've got 30 years' water experience on the Birch River PSD Board. Actually, it is not in the area of fire suppression. The Board is going to have to use money to put in a tank and, so that we can have more pressure to be able to provide the sprinkling system that is required by the state Fire Marshal. So that is going to have to be done so that we can upgrade the school there and build a school.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Amick, Mr. Berry?
I've been told by a couple people that Richwood had worked on their water system until they could bring up the pressure. But as far as I know right now, we're going to have to spend $70,000, and with inflation, it may be more, to put a tank on the building for the sprinkler system. That's why we didn't, we were not able to put the pods together. People were asking, why did you put the pods together down here and not in Richwood? That's because of the water pressure issues.
You can't do that, Fred. I understand if we have a pipe running from the 39th side of the river across to the property, to the edge of the property, we could hook to that and get better water pressure and maybe not have to have the tank. I think that might be a possibility, too. But either way, we can get the water there, okay?
Okay. This question is for our commissioners, or for the candidates for a commissioner. What do you feel you can do about the drug issue in our county? And I think we should start with Mr. Roberts.
So just a little background. I've actually worked for about a year and a half with Reach Up Recovery in Craigsville. I've helped provide funding. I've helped understand what trauma-based addiction is. And one of the things I think we need to do is we need to capitalize on our spiritual leaders of the community and bring in a faith-based approach to this, folks. That's exactly what the solution is. I listened to, probably five or six years ago, I was listening to NPR, and that's one of the things that they had spoke of, and I think the guy was way further ahead in his thoughts than he realized in our country. The trauma-based addiction starts with, when you start self-medicating, and we have to get folks off the drugs. We have to work to make sure that they're educated. We have to make sure that they have resources, and that they know the resources are there and how to use, how to properly utilize them. Incarceration, which I always thought was the answer, is actually not the answer. It's a cycle. It goes back and forth. You put somebody in, you put them on the county dime, you put them right back out on the streets, and it rinses and repeats. So we've got to take a different approach, and I believe that spiritual recovery approach is what's going to be the best for the county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Same question to Mr. Atkins.
Drug is addiction, and it affects every family here in the county. And I've had it affect my family. Certainly, the issues that go on is you have to wonder, why did they start, why did they start drugs to start with? And I think the biggest issue we have to start with is early in life with education. We've got to get the kids educated and steer them in the right direction. We need to have a support group for these kids that are growing up. And I saw something else on the Board of Ed. When I was there, I had one kid in three times with marijuana, and his mother was killed in a drug accident, in an incident. But anyway, you've got to educate them. We have to be able to, one of the things we need to do is give, have needles available for these kids. You get innocent people affected, partners that get hepatitis, or you have a mother that's born with it and gives a baby with hepatitis. There's a lot of issues.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Staying with our candidates for commission, I think this is an important question. I think it'd be good for you guys to expound on this a little bit. Candidates, what is the commission's role with the Board of Education? And we can start with Mr. Lloyd.
Okay. Well, the commission role, one of the things that we actually have is, we're an overseer to an extent, okay? State Code 6-6-7 says that there are three entities in the county that can impeach the school board, okay? One of them is the commission, one of them is prosecutor, and one of them is the people, okay? And the commission and the Board of Education, both are elected officials in this county, okay? And they both need to work together, okay? I tried to set up a meeting last year, and anyway, it didn't happen, okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Roberts?
All right. So from my understanding, the commission and the Board of Education are bilateral entities, right? So they actually have their own rows. That's how I break it down in my mind. They've got their own rows. And I think the county government will work best when people work in their own rows. I really believe that. To my understanding, 74 cents of each dollar is taken out of the taxpayers' money when they actually turn, you know, when the sheriff collects the taxes. 74 cents on each dollar is taken and directly handed over to the Board of Education. And folks, the way I look at it, you vote for your Board of Education members, and you make the decision that way, and those are the people that actually need to have that control. You know, I'm running for county commissioner. In my mind, that's kind of CEO, CFO of the county. You know, if there's something I needed from the Board of Education, I'll work with them. I have no issues with that. No matter who's seated in those positions, I'll work with them. But they're elected for that position, I'm elected for county commissioner, you know, if I get that position. That's exactly how I view it. It's two rows that run parallel. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Okay. Shifting over to the left to the BOE candidates. Where do you see the BOE in five years?
I see us having new schools, and hopefully, and I see our students learning new things, enjoying them. To do good with education, we have to enjoy what we're studying. There has to be a reason for it, a future in it. So that's what we want to create.
Well, first of all, in five years, perhaps I won't be running, but in, for the first four, I think we have a great opportunity. We're trying to set up a new school system. At one school, we're going to have the community schools. At the other, we're going to have a comprehensive high school. And with the plan that we're working with, and by the plan, I mean with our career and technical programs with the state, the state even wants in on that. They like our suggestions so well that they want in, and they're going to help us, and they said that may go statewide with the program. So the future looks bright. Let's get them built.
He wants your job.
He does. He does.
I definitely see the schools being completed, and I'm hoping that we can even have had one and maybe two graduations out of those schools. It's going to happen. This has been, the last four years, especially with COVID, it has slowed down everything, and everybody knows this. I mean, you couldn't get ahold of any of the agencies that we had to deal with to get these permits. I mean, no one was working in their offices. It was just a hard time. And I know you can sit back and you can Monday morning quarterback, but there's an old saying, until you've walked a mile in somebody's shoes, you need to stop and think about it.
She can just keep the mic. That's okay. All right. Next question is for the BOE, and we'll work our way that way this time. What is going to be done for the overwhelming attendance of the vocational center until the new schools are completed so each student can attend the class of their choice?
Well, we found out today in our meeting that we are going to be moving one of the career classes down into the learning center, which will open us up to have, I think, two more classes at the career center. And actually, the career center is pretty full. We started out, I think it was when I first came on the Board, we've tripled the attendance at that career center since then. It's really great, and I don't know if anybody's ever been up there to see the coffee shop, how that has taken off, and it was all constructed from the kids. I mean, they did everything from the carpentry to, they make their own beans, they sell it. It's just like going into Starbucks when you go in there. And actually, it was confusing with, you know, having a Starbucks. But it's just awesome, the things that's going to happen with every program that's there.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Amick?
We're not full yet. It's still growing. We have room, and we're going to make more room. The demand is very, very overwhelming, how the children are going into this area. We had, last year, by working with the O-Tech, we had nine students not only graduate with a diploma, they graduated with a two-year degree in business or education. And at no parent's cost. This was free. They can then go on to college and further that. They'll start out as a junior. Any college in the state will accept them. So we're growing, we've got room. Bring it on. We can make room for them. I cannot keep.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Mr. Berry?
Just going to have to let Fred do that.
Trying to do my job.
I think it's great how the
I think it's great how the kids are catching on to the CTE. It's one of the best things going right now. I would say, what, what was the question?
The question was, what is going to be done for the overwhelming attendance of the vocational center until the new schools are completed, so each student can attend the class of their choice?
With this board, we will find a way, okay? We want the students to be there, they want to be there, and it will happen. Thank you. I can't do that for a job.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Our next question goes to Commissioner Atkins. As current commissioner, how much time do you devote to the job?
Really good question. Much more time than what the average person thinks. I would say probably four or five hours a day at least on that, as far as what I do right now. There's always prep time, there's, there's reading time. Just, just traveling is an hour and a half. It's forty-five minutes getting here and forty-five minutes back home, as far as getting here to do what I need to do. This week, I have seven meetings. So there's, there's meetings that, that go on all the time. And I actually had another meeting tonight, okay? But anyway, it, it is one of these things that, there is a lot of hours involved in doing what I do. And preparation is everything. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkins. And this question is for candidate Gary Roberts. If elected, how much time will you devote to the job?
So I have a lawn care business, and I have a lot of flexibility in my schedule. So basically, I will let the position dictate the amount of hours I put into it. Whatever the county needs, whatever the constituency needs is what I'll dedicate over to that. If it, and if it's full-time, I'll devote full-time, I don't have an issue with that. Like my opponent said, the preparation time is very effective and very important and very effective. That's one of the things I think that needs to take place, is just a lot of prep time put into it, not just the three hours or four hours twice a month that people, like, like Dr. Atkins said, that people believe that it actually is. I've set some meetings for almost two years, I've missed a few. But I, I plan on hitting the ground running, and I have a good expectation of what I'm going to have to put into the position itself. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Staying with the BOE for both candidates, I, I'm sorry, staying with the commissioners. So one thing you have to remember about meet the candidates is everybody's human. And we all go through it, okay? So staying with the commissioners. What do you feel is the most pressing issue for our county?
Is that me first? All right. So I feel that the most pressing issue for the county is going to be the attraction and retention of residents and businesses, small businesses and medium-sized businesses. That's where our money's going to come from, that's why we, you know, that's where we need an increase in tax revenue in the county. I think aesthetically, our county has a lot of, a lot of gain that we could make improvements on. And that's low-hanging fruit in my mind, that's going to come with a, a large yield with a small amount of investment. And that investment's going to be time, time and efforts to get the county cleaned up, time and efforts to make our, our county a place that's attractive to prospective residents and prospective large and medium-based businesses. So that would be my priority number one coming in, is just to stabilize the, the residency in the county and make sure that we're not losing residences, churning, churning our residents and then watching the property taxes go up. So aesthetics, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Atkins.
The most pressing issue we have in the county is infrastructure. The economy all boils off of infrastructure. For instance, here in Somersville, why did Somersville grow? Because there was a road built here, okay? And the bridge, that helped it grow so much. Here in the county, broadband is going to be the biggest thing we can. People are moving into the county, and we have to have broadband, okay? Businesses need these things. It's a competitive world out there. Yes, water, sewer, all those things count too, but they're all part of infrastructure, and that's, that's what spins the economy. If you don't have it, they're not going to locate here, folks. It's competitive, and it wouldn't hurt to have some flat land while we're at it too, okay? I mean, that's, these are, that's what we need.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkins. Okay, this question is for Ms. Kaufman. In reference to the question regarding the steps being taken to close the gap developed by COVID-19, you had mentioned after-school and summer programs. Will there be bus transportation provided? This seems to be a problem currently, children have no way to get out for extracurricular activities.
There definitely will be bus transportation for this. We did this, these programs last year. It was, I think, we had more students last year than, you know, we'd normally have when we would do like a summer program. I think there was a lot more interest in it. I think the, the parents know that the, the students, you know, were lagging behind by not being able to be face-to-face with their teachers. So we definitely will be providing transportation for those kids, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this, this question is for all BOE candidates. How has the current BOE addressed dropouts? Example, alternative education.
Starting with me?
Sure.
Well, we have several ways that we are working with the dropouts. We have counselors that help them. We have graduation, graduation coaches that come in and help the students. We have programs actually for students that are having problems, missing school. You know, we help them to be able to graduate. Sometimes they can even graduate, you know, a little early. We're doing everything we can to make sure that each child can graduate with a diploma, so when they do get out into the world, they'll be able to make a livable wage and support their families, if they so choose.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Amick.
Well, unfortunately, Nicholas County has a lot of homeless children. And they're living with grandparents or an aunt or uncle due to the drugs which came up a while ago that they were talking about. But we have some people in the central office that work with the children like that. Mr. Williams, Tammy works with that. They go to the homes, they talk to them. And unfortunately, sometimes they have to take them to court to get them to go to school. It's critical. And they got by with a little bit here during this COVID, they have. But we're working hard on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Amick. Mr. Berry.
Again, I think students, if they find an interest, a reason for being in school, is the biggest help that they can have. And we are doing this through the CTE, and we plan to expand the CTE. And hopefully, that will keep more students in school. That's what we were hoping. Career, technical. And these are, they actually get their hands in there and, and find something they like to work at and realize that they can make a living at what they like to do and make a good living at it. It's exciting. And the kids, kids like it too.
All right, staying with the BOE, we can stay right there with Mr. Berry. To all the BOE candidates, what can you guys do to help bridge the massive divide in our county?
Well, I think we need to realize we're all the same people. We're all mountaineers. There's no, there's no line that says one is, one isn't. We are all the same. We have to realize this. We don't we shouldn't split on differences of opinion. We can have difference of opinion and agree to not disagree. But it's not good to carry on and continue with a division among the same people. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Amick.
You know, the bottom line, while all this division in the county, the bottom line was consolidation. No one has ever asked me, why did I vote for consolidation? But if they'd been a principal and you lose your students, if you lose your students, you eventually lose a teacher. And it's hard to schedule. I've, I've worked all over the entire county. And when you do not have enough flexibility and you see your students, you'd like for them to have some electives that other students in the county have, but you don't have the teachers. When you've got to go back and look at each teacher and see what their minor is, maybe they can teach a class. It's hard. But we need to all get together as one and build these cotton-picking schools.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Ms. Kaufman.
He's absolutely right. I think once we get started on these schools and we get them built, I think the divide will close. I think really though, I think the kids are youth are the ones that's going to close this divide, because with them, there is no divide. With them, they come, they, they come together. They, they play sports together, they go to the movies together, they go out and eat together, they go to the lake together. They don't have this animosity among themselves. And so I think that that's going to be the key to bridging this gap in this county, because some of the adults were really set in on it. And I mean, there was a lot of stuff happened that was actually before my time. But, you know, and you can't live in the past, you got to move forward. So we got to look to our youth, because they're, they're the key to our future.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. This question is for both sides of candidates, so we're going to move from, we'll go from Mr. Lloyd on all the way through, from my right to left. And the question is, why should voters give you their vote?
Good question. Probably the biggest thing I bring to the county is leadership. As the board president, when I was on the school board, we came from around thirty-fifth to approximately tenth, twelfth, and as far as the counties. We made good progress, there was no fighting, okay? Everyone was treated fairly. With, with the county commission, yes, there have been issues as far as with the Board of Education. However, we have many projects that are ongoing. Infrastructure is happening in this county now. It took us some years to get going, but we've got it going. With the drugs, we now, there was this announcement today, there's a ninety-nine million in West Virginia. We were in on that too. There's another million or so that's coming to West Virginia and, and into Nicholas County because we, we voted to join the lawsuit.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Roberts.
All righty, so the reason I think that I should receive the votes is because I'm a leader, not a cheerleader. I'm going to be dragging those coattails across the line, not riding across them and claiming somebody else's victory. I will not share victory with somebody, I'll lead that victory. You'll find no one giving, no one giving more time to the community than I do already, and imagine what happens when that's my job. I work, I've handed out food boxes, I've done a lot of things. And basically, every free minute of my life that I'm not performing my duties, I'm doing something in the community. And you won't find anybody on the panel here that does more for the community than I do in any aspect. I'm telling you that right now. What happens when it's my job and I'm paid to do it? And I have the actual, the area of impact and, and the resources to do something on a global scale for just what I do for Craigsville right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Ms. Kaufman.
I think you should let me have four more years on this board, because I'm not a quitter. I'm a hard worker. I've been involved in, in construction for thirty years, basically. I have common sense. Also, I've been on the design and construction committee for these new schools for the past two years. I have knowledge of, you know, things that are going on there as far as trying to get the schools designed. And that is something that, you know, we've had to do, it's been extra for me. Sometimes every week, we, we would go and meet. So, like I said, I, I think that I have a lot of knowledge that goes along with construction.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Amick.
Well, I am asking your permission to give me another four years. I'd like to finish the job. Started out with the negotiations down in Charleston, the woman that had us meet with the state superintendent and everything, and it was, it was a little hostile at first. But they came around to seeing our point of view. And they were in agreement that we had a good plan. We have a plan. These schools are going to be unreal. And the second thing that businesses, when they come into a county, like in Mason County, they look for land. Is it okay? And then after that, they look at the schools. And our schools are going to be top-notch. The future is bright in this dim old world.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Mr. Berry.
The reason I've spent years on the board and, and looking forward to continuing for a couple more years or a few, I believe in young people. And that's, you're going to attach a lot of things to that. We have to be there for them. So that's my reason.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berry. This question is going to the right. First to Mr. Atkins. Social media has played a bar, played a part in both of campaigns. Seems like all campaigns now, it's playing a big part of. So to Commissioner Atkins, can you explain why you have only used social media during the campaign season and not during the past term to update your constituents?
What I do is, our meetings are basically on TV all the time, okay? And I think that is a form of social media. And we're in the paper every, every week, okay? That's another form of social media. There is more social media than just Facebook, okay? Facebook has so many, it has good aspects and it has bad aspects, as we all know, okay? And when I'm on, when we have meetings, I always try to ask questions that I think that the people want to know. I get the answers to the people, because that's, that's what it's all about. Getting it out to the people so they understand what's going on in our county. And there's your transparency, folks, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Atkins. To Mr. Roberts, can you tell us how you plan to update your constituents?
Okay, so one of the things we've talked about are, depending on whether the other two commissioners agree with, but either be like bi-weekly or monthly updates in the paper, a small section in the paper that defines where the, where the county money's going. So, you know, it usually turns into a Richwood-Somersville thing, what's Richwood getting, what's Somersville getting? So I want to use that, I want to use social media, I want to educate the constituency on the offices, the elected officials, what their core duties are, what their responsibilities are. And I think that in itself will set proper expectations, and social media is a good platform to do that with. I do that now, we do little educational seminars on night, every night. We have little ditties of how people remember, how many people are on the Board of Education, what their terms are. And what I do not do, and I have not done, is I've spent the past four years out, and I've spent the past four years developing a relationship with folks online and building trust. And I'm not trying to come in two or three months before the election and optimize on some photo opportunities. So when you see pictures of me, I'm dirty doing something, literally. And I continue to do that. And I continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Staying with the commissioners, and we can stay with Mr. Roberts.
All right.
Question for both of them. Can you tell me what community activities you have been involved in, in the past year?
All right, I get a minute for only for this one. Okay, so I've handed out food boxes, I've worked with Reach Up Recovery, I've actually provided meals directly, and I've, I've resourced funding for Reach Up Recovery. I have educated the constituency on offices, I've educated on elections, I have, there's a lot. Picked up needles, I've hauled people back and forth to drug recovery meetings, I have, it's, it's, it's just overwhelming the amount of things I've actually done. I've helped small businesses in the area. I've done a lot of things, I really have. And if you want to actually know what it is, Gary E. Roberts Jr. on Facebook, and you can get on there and see directly. I put it all out there, I want everybody to know what resources are available. I've made myself a resource in the communities, and a trusted resource at that. So, and that's all free of charge. I want you to know that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Atkins.
Well, one of the things that comes with commissioners, meetings, okay? And I'm in meetings, just as I explained, I've had seven meetings this week, or I will have the meetings. And having the meetings ties up a lot of your time, getting to those meetings. And, and that's not only for my community, it's for the whole county, folks, okay? That we're dealing here. As far as what other else I've done, also belong to the Lions Club, okay? And the Lions Club does a lot of things in the community. We, as far as the pancake feeds, we provide scholarships, we, we do a lot of other good in the community, as far as glasses and those things. There's, there's a lot that goes on. But the biggest thing as the commissioner is, when you get into that position, you're going to be in meetings all the time. And that's the way it works, folks, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I'd like to take this time just as a small, I don't know, break. I think it's very important for us to kind of maybe even get up, stretch a second. We do have snacks in the back, there are more than brownies that are back there, I promise you that. There's definitely drinks, there's definitely things that you can get, just to stretch a bit. I know this is going to be kind of a long evening answering questions, and we appreciate everyone's participation. So, as you were kind of moving in that direction, we're going to continue with questions, all right? So this question is going to go for the BOE.
So we don't get to get out and stretch it?
No stretching for our candidates.
I need water.
All right. For our BOE question, and we can start with, that's excellent, we'll start with Mr. Amick on this question. Overwhelming responses or overwhelming questions that I continue to get on schools, and I think it's on everyone's mind, without a doubt. So, I think this is important. Explain why it has been six years and our schools are still not built.
Well, first of all, Americans are a fast food people. We want something, we want it right now. And I'm, I'm like that, too. You don't know how many times I've got after the architect. But it, six years and no school, unbelievable. I had to tell my granddaughter she wasn't going to graduate from the new school. But there've been all kinds of interruptions. We've had legality issues, we've had COVID. What would normally take one month to get approved, it takes nine months to get approved. It's, it's, it's crazy. And I can't believe, she's already waving at me already, but it's a slow process, it goes up, what goes up through the channel with the government, if you've ever dealt with the government, it, it's crazy. And then it has to go back down, and now I have to be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Let's go with Mr. Berry.
We actually have a list of the dates, I won't read, there's three pages there. We did not get our funding until January 2020, and that was the process that finally there was some light or understanding with all these agencies. There was COVID delays, a lot of the federal offices were closed, and you could not make contact with them. It's, it's been a challenge, you know, and we're still working on it, though. And I believe there's a light at the tunnel, end of it.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Ms. Kaufman.
Well, I got elected on the board in 2018, and we were waiting on the mediated agreement whenever I took, took the seat in July. I think it was in September that that mediated agreement got signed. It was not until January the 31st of 2020 that the, the funding came down from FEMA that we could start on the schools. So really, it has not been six years. It's been six years since the flood, but not six years since we've been able to start on the rebuilding of the schools. And everybody just doesn't realize, like I said, I'm on the Design Committee, we go to Charleston, we were going like every other week. It's been really, you just don't understand how much goes into trying to design the five schools, and then the two that's, that's going to be refitted. It's time consuming. But we're pushing.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Staying with the BOE candidates, and we'll start with Mrs. Kaufman. Why can't the Career Center remain in Craigsville?
Well, we, when the superintendent and her, her staff went and got $42 million extra to put that, put that new Career Center, and the comprehensive high school, the comprehensive high school is at Glade Creek. And that is going to allow us to expand those programs. I think we have nine currently, to at least 16. And it's going to be over here in this new facility. It has to be that way. Because of the way that the 42 million was attained. If we don't do it that way, we'll lose the 42 million.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Amick.
Well, Ms. Kaufman is, is correct. Anytime with the new laws that come about, anytime you build a comprehensive high school, you have to have a career and technical center in it. It's mandated. And already, we've went from 10 programs in the, at the career, to 13, and we're going to expand more. But why can it not be? That is the reason, that's the law. You have to move that there, and we've got 42 million because we went with the 428 Plan where we got an extra 100 million. And the way inflation's going, that's going to be a lifesaver. Instead of 72 million, we're going to get 177 million. But still, inflation is just gobbling everything up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Amick. Mr. Berry.
The Career Tech Program actually will start in the elementary and the primary grades, and it will build up through the high school. And we want all those students, every student, to search and to try different areas to find the one they like. Why, why are we going to put it into high school? Because that's where they ultimately choose a career, if that's what they want to choose. If they want to choose to go on to high school, they can do that, or from high school to college. Some of those are already doing that in a vocational school. I think my time's up.
And while you're thinking of another question, we're the only one in the state that's incorporating this program with K-12 all the way up. And the state is watching, and they, they're licking their chokes.
All right. Thank you. To those, those answers, excellent. So this question is for the commission candidates, and we'll start with Mr. Atkins first. Do you support or oppose a county fire fee?
I support a county fire fee. I support a county fire fee. It's very necessary, we've got some fire departments that are struggling, and if we don't help them, we stand to lose those. And if those, if those are laws, those people in those areas, their insurance for their houses, they're going to go way up if they can even get them. And helping them with a fire fee will also help them some as far as not have to spend so much time, they're trying to raise money. These guys have to spend 120 hours just to get certified. They spend a lot, a lot of hours in what they do. And it's, it's, we need to help them. And without their help, we, we had the one down here at Melty at Hookersville that was lost. And we don't, we don't need to lose any more fire departments in our county, they're very necessary. That's why we need to have a fire fee.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Roberts.
So once again, I, I 100% support the fire fee. So I've made my trip through all seven fire departments while campaigning, and the one thing that I did here across the board was, the, the funding was the main issue, it really was. Funding, and then you get into the memberships. And I don't necessarily see those two being interrelated, but if you provide quality training and a quality facility and safe aspects, I think more people will join. But the, the understanding that I have is that, as my opponent said, that the, your ISO rating will raise if you lose a fire department, if it's not within so many miles of the house or the structure, the ISO rating goes up, and also your homeowners insurance goes up. And basically, the, what I was explaining is, so say your homeowners insurance runs $700 a year right now, if you lose that fire department in the area through the lack of funding, that that'll go to about $7,000 a year. It'll be, it'll be about 10 times what you currently pay. So I 100% support that, and I believe that's needed to free up the firemen and firewomen to do what they need to do as far as training and safety aspects. Thank you.
Okay, we'll stay right there with Mr. Roberts.
Hey, look at me now.
To both, to both candidates for running for commissioner, what are some specific problems in our county, and what do you propose to do to fix those problems?
So one of the main issues that I believe we have in the county is misknowers that travel through the illustrious Facebook, right? We are all Facebook warriors, and we love it, and we believe everything that actually comes out there. So I'd like through transparency and communication out with the constituency, I'd like to eliminate all that, or as much of it as I possibly can. I mean, you can only convince so many people of what's going on. Another few, or a few other things that I believe is, as my opponent said earlier, would be infrastructure. I would basically try to gain the knowledge on the needs of the county and work to address those as well, because I know high-speed internet is definitely one that we're suffering and lagging in. Room and board, we had a discussion the other night about a potential, trying to attract some sort of a hotel or motel into the Richwood area, some sort of fast food restaurant in that area as well, and, and, and work to develop that as, as well as the Summersville side of the county here. And I'm actually trying to eliminate, using the word "side," but those are just a couple of things I think we need attention on immediately. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Mr. Atkins.
Well, as far as problems we have with the county, certainly drugs are one of the problems. And I think that the incoming money that we're going to get, that we're getting in, and we're going to get in, we're going to get in more, when we, we really need to get a team together to sit down and look at how we want to address this situation, to help it get better, okay? You know, drugs have been going on forever. 50 years ago, the war on drugs, Nixon started it, okay? So it's something that we really do have to, to deal with. As far as infrastructure, yeah, we're getting there on that, but we're not there, folks. The folks down through, I was just down through Dixie and down through Swiss the other day, they're in a hole down there, they need help. And you know, we've applied to get them that help, too. And they're going to be the first major project with a lead project in the county that we're proposing to help them out. Fire fee, got to have that. That's one of those things we've got to have, okay? We can't lose the fire departments, very important, okay?
All right, staying with Mr. Atkins. So, Mr. Atkins, you made a comment about giving out needles to solve the drug crisis. Can you explain a little bit about your statement about giving out needles?
Well, what I mean there is that when needles are reused, and often if they're usable from one person to another, they're going to spread HIV and hepatitis. Our biggest issue we have in the county is Hep C, okay? It's out there, it's everywhere. Hepatitis, really pretty rare. And if they're using, if they're going to use, then why not use with a clean needle, okay? That makes so much more sense. And like I say, you have the innocent people that get brought into it, their sexual partners, okay? The, the parents, that, the, the mothers that have the babies that could pass that on, those are innocent people that are affected. And by using these needles, a clean needle, I mean, we just found one sticking in the sidewalk the other day, right, right by our office. I mean, this is important, and that's why we should have clean needles. If we're going to have it, let's address it that way.
All right, thank you, Mr. Atkins. And to Mr. Roberts, your views possibly on passing out needles to help combat the drug problem in Nicholas County?
So needle exchange is part of harm reduction. I was a fence rider on that, I'm not going to lie, I'm not going to lie. When I first came out, I said absolutely not. Once I educated myself through, like I talk, I keep preaching Reach Up Recovery, it's, it's been beneficial to my knowledge. And working with some of the county officials, I was able to obtain the knowledge that those needles are, they're, they're doled out in lots, and there's an exchange program. And once I found out that there is regulation, it's not just, hey, throw a bag of needles out to somebody, I'm definitely in support of that. Like, like my opponent said, when you get into the, the adverse effects of using dirty needles and things like that, it's, it's not good for the county, and exponentially, it's going to grow. So like I said, I was a fence rider, and now I'm on the side of support, as long as it's properly ran and properly regulated. I understand that they are allotted out, and you do exchange, you know, and you exchange your lot for another lot that's actually serialized or tracked to you as an individual. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Moving to our left, to my left, excuse me, to the BOE. Let's start with Mr. Berry on this question, and work our way back to, back to the center. What will these new schools provide for our students?
Opportunity. We have the new programs we're developing and have had. Again, that opens up a lot of areas to the students to realize there are things they can do that they never thought of before. There, there'll be clean, safe facilities. We will be able to build, involve five major schools in, in the reconstruction. It's just a win-win, there's no, there's no downside to it.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Amick.
Well, I concur with Mr. Berry, what he said. But the kids will, can you imagine, they won't be in the pods. They'll just feel relieved there. But with the new pro, change is constant. You know, a lot of people want it the way it was. Well, the good old days are not coming back. So we have a plan that will help our students where they can compete with anyone in the nation. We've got this plan. And we'll, we think it will work. We're, we're not starting when they hit high school, K-12 right on up. And our students will be challenged. Technology, they use these iPads just like crazy, just like I used to use a pencil and paper. So these new school, schools will really, the environment will be pleasant, the teachers will be showing the latest. And there's a flag again.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Ms. Kaufman.
Repeat the question.
What will these new schools provide for our students?
Okay. These new schools are going to provide our students with opportunities that we never had when we were younger. They're going to provide them with, with knowledge that when they get out there, they can be able to earn a livable wage. We want them to be able to stay here in the community where they were born and were raising them. We want our family unit to be able to stay together. The world is getting so bad. You know, I want my kids and I want my grandkids to be here with me. You know, I don't want them to have to be able to go away and go out of state and live, you know, where we can't be there, be with them. And I think these schools is going to give them that opportunity. And I think these schools is going to give them that opportunity to where they can provide a livable wage, and they can be able to stay here, and we can continue the family units.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And we'll stay right there with Ms. Kaufman. So, to the BOE candidates, and hopefully I get this correct, so you might have to correct me if I get it wrong, but it's a two-question, and we're going to combine it. We hear lots about the 428 funding. What is it, and why was it chosen? And along with that, when exactly are the funds available to start the construction of the schools?
Me first? Okay. The 428 was an alternate funding that was offered after Hurricane Sandy went through the Northeast and tore everything up. Instead of traditional funding of providing like door for door, and a desk for a desk, and window for a window, this allowed you to go back and if, it allowed you to go back and capitalize on your largest enrollment. What the facility was used for was used like to help, like I know in Birch River during the flood, it was used, actually, they housed people there for a couple of days that, you know, were homeless and didn't have anywhere to go, provided meals and food for them. You could use all that and allow us to get 100 more million dollars by using that funding for our schools.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Amick?
Well, to reiterate what Ms. Kaufman said, the 428 plan, they made us aware that we would get the size of our schools and the population, we would get 71 million to build. They said, however, there is a 428 plan, if you want to go through with that, that you can increase that if you go back in your county when the highest population was there. 1965 was that year. And we were allowed to build by the population in 1965. I think then Richwood was a AAA, and Sommersville was a AA.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, you stop, see?
Sorry.
So, we don't have the money. We get the money when we finish a project. I wish we did get the money and get a little bit of interest on that, but we don't. We have to requisition, it has to go through all the steps. She hasn't put it up. Don't you look at me.
I can't be 10 extra seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Amick.
I don't know if I was finished.
Mr. Berry?
They're right. It's an opportunity to have more to work with, to replace and add to that. The only advantage of the regular funding would be to, it would count for inflation. It would increase with the inflation, but we got the 100 million extra to start right off the top by taking the 428. And we saw the opportunity to build more for our students. So, that was what we chose.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, and you can stay right there. We'll stay, the next question there for Board of Education. Is the Board of Education audited on a regular basis? Have the audits been without major findings?
Yes. Once a year, we have not had any findings in the past 20 years I've been on the board. It's been clear, good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Amick?
I agree with Mr. Berry. I mean, they check it every year, and they also, after it's all said and done, they give us a compliment for how efficient our treasurer is and his staff. So, yes, we are audited. No, we have not been found with any faults.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Ms. Kaufman?
Yes, we are audited, and I'm very familiar with that, being on the PSD board. But, you're not going to believe this, but even our auditor is audited. So, there's really two audits to go on there. So, we don't have any findings, and that is, we are getting comments that that's rare. So, we have a very good financial team at the board.
Since she doesn't have her red flag hadn't went up, they've even offered our treasurer a job out this day. He's inefficient.
Don't spread that around.
Sharing time? I'm not exactly sure what to do with that. So, we're going to go right to the next question, and it is for Mr. Roberts over here to the right.
That's what he has for speaking, right?
So, Mr. Roberts, when elected, if elected, to the Nicholas County being a commissioner, what is your main goal, and what would be your first business to conduct?
My first business would be to familiarize myself with everything. You know, sitting in there as a constituent, as a resident of the county, there's a certain level of exposure that you have, and there's a certain level of exposure that you don't. You know, they go into executive session, and you get kicked out, and you go out and hang out in hallways for a while and chit chat, and you come back inside. So, I think that deeper level of exposure to the commission and understanding that the core roles and responsibilities would be my first primary, or my priority there with that. As far as a major task, I think that would be dependent upon the information that I was presented on that deeper level. I guess I would have to go with whatever existing tasks are at hand. You know, I don't believe in reinventing the wheel, so we might as well just go ahead. I mean, my goal would be to work with the other two commissioners and just continue with what they have going on, and slot in what my goals and objectives are at that point in time with that in-depth knowledge. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And to Commissioner Atkins, you mentioned millions that Nicholas County would receive in a drug settlement. How much of that will be put towards addiction and recovery programs?
The first part, half of that is stipulated to go towards that. I've not seen any details on what came out in the paper this morning. And so, that makes two lawsuits, and I think the first one was for 100 million, the second one's for 99 million. I think there's more coming, and that kind of sets the stage that maybe the others will be for the same amount of money. I don't really know. Okay? But certainly, half of that will go towards drug efforts. I will say this, you know, the average public doesn't know that our jail bills, we're budgeting 900,000 this year for jail bills, and a major part of that is drug issues. Okay? If we can cut that down, then we could spend the money other where in the county, other places in the county. I mean, this is a major draw on this county. I mean, that's almost 20% of our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. And staying with Mr. Atkins and the commissioners, do you support building a new Nicholas County High School, Sommersville Middle School, and VOTAC at Glade Creek?
I do support that at Glade Creek. I would also like to see the same thing at Richwood, okay? But I understand as far as financially how things are, okay? It is one of these things that I do feel that the kids that attend Richwood High School are getting a little bit on the short end of the stick there, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Roberts?
So, we're going to refer back to an earlier statement I have. I want to hold my own robe, all right? I'm running for Board of Education. I mean, Board of, listen to me, County Commission, I got my words twisted here. I'm running for County Commission, not Board of Education. So, my goal would be to support whatever the Board of Education decides, as long as that's done legally and correctly and addresses the needs of the kids. I mean, folks, it's, there's two different entities here. They do run parallel. There are some, I guess, some touch points with that, but that's, I'm a commissioner. I'm worried about commission duties, I really am. I have kids in the public school system. I do want to note that. I do have children in there. As a constituent and as a resident, I do have a concern with that. As a commissioner, I need to be able to differentiate those two and be, and work it on a professional level. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Over to the BOE side. And we'll start with Ms. Kaufman. Webster County High School students also attend the Career Center. How will the move affect these students?
I don't think that's a true statement. I'm sorry. They don't, as far as I know. They, now, they do go to Richwood for sporting purposes. I think they, they're, they go there and I think maybe run on the track there. Maybe the little bitty basketball teams go there and play, but they do not go to the Career Center as far as I know.
Okay. I don't think there's any need to go down the list if that's wrong, so we'll stay with Ms. Kaufman?
I was going to say, unless something's going on I don't know about.
Sometimes when you're the moderator, you read the questions.
Yeah.
That's a good thing to do, is it right?
That's your job.
All right. So, to the BOE candidates, we'll start with Ms. Kaufman. Why are we seeing progress at Glade Creek and so little progress at Cherry River?
Actually, because what's being done at Glade Creek right now on a larger scale, because it's a larger facility, has already happened at Glade, I mean, at the Cherry River. All the underground work, the drainage and stuff, was done earlier. While nothing was being done over here, it was, the work was being done over there. So, it looks like that everything's going on over here. We're not doing anything at Richwood, but actually, Richwood's already happened as far as that, so we're trying to catch up with the Glade Creek site and get them both back to the same place so we can start the construction.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Mr. Amick?
Well, I think she's stayed it very well. I mean, we've already done that work at Richwood that we're trying to do now at Glade, and they are moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Mr. Berry, we'll give you an opportunity at least.
Yes. We started there because we didn't have the finishing, the property as far as getting it ready for the groundwork. There were studies that had to be done that hadn't been done at that time, so it was a little bit farther behind the development at Richwood. What we see going on now has been done there, and a lot of that work up there is underground that you don't see. You see the nice paving and the streets that was added, but there was a lot of drainage there that had to be dealt with, and we probably spent in the neighborhood of 5 million on that preparing for the structure. So, it has been worked on.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, and we'll stay right there with Mr. Berry in BOE questions. Now, this is, again, one of those questions, probably one of you could answer, but we'll give you all an opportunity to respond. And the question would be, why does the Nicholas County High School get a new school if it wasn't flooded?
Well, the, we wanted to do a comprehensive facility, and in order to do that, we needed to bring things together from the different schools. We also, there was another underlying reason there. We needed either to build a new elementary here or to refurbish a building we had. So, if we can consolidate some of the buildings and are able to have that high school facility, which is, yes, it wasn't flooded, it's in good shape, it will be refurbished to fit the younger students, and this way, it saves the county a great deal of money. Otherwise, we would have to spend on a new grade school.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Amick?
Maybe the next time you can give me the first question. I agree with what Mr. Berry has said, and the good thing out of this is that we're going to be able to put the elementary school at Nicholas County High, and that's going to save taxpayers in this county millions to build a new school, minimum 30, 40,000 dollars. So, a million, excuse me, but all systems are go.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Amick. Ms. Kaufman?
Any questions?
Yep. Question was, why does Nicholas County High School get a new school if it wasn't flooded?
Okay. Nicholas County High School getting a new school and putting that comprehensive school is going to provide so many more opportunities for the kids here, because they're going to be able to get the best of both worlds. And some people don't like the prospect of having a big comprehensive high school, but they're going to have the choice. They can go to the small community school if they so choose, and there will be kids that, that's what they want to do. They don't want to go to the bigger school. So, we're going to be giving them a choice. So, I think that's a win-win for all of our kids. They'll have the choice. The parent will have the choice. Do I want my kid to go to this larger comprehensive school, or do I want to keep them in a smaller community school? So, I think that's the main reason, and it will allow us to retrofit that high school for the other school, the elementary school, which will save the taxpayers a lot of money.
Re-transportation.
There's no sharing of time? We've discussed this before, and I'm going to have to put it in my notes when I go over the rules and regulations at the beginning.
That's right. You didn't say that.
Free transportation also.
So, the next question is for our county commissioners, and we'll start with Mr. Roberts first. What can the county commissioners do to get rid of the many dilapidated house and/or buildings in the county?
So, one of the things I've talked about over the past couple of years on my videos is some sort of light county ordinance. I'm not a fan of ordinances and laws and rules. That's why I moved back from New Jersey. When I lived in New Jersey, you had a $25 fee or permit fee just to change your hot water heater, and it wasn't for somebody to come down and take a look at it, it was just a fee, right? But I think we need some light ordinances, and we have enough dilapidated structures in the county to show that folks aren't, they're not self-maintaining or self-governing in this aspect, so we need to put in some sort of light ordinance that says if a structure is condemned or condemnable or it's not repairable, that it needs to be taken down. You can give a long period of time, you can give them 24 months or something like that, but we have to start somewhere, and I think something light like that or a starting point would get us launched and headed in the right direction. It's, they're eyesores, and that's part of the aesthetic project that I would like to take on as a commissioner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Okay. Dr. Atkins?
Well, there are some of the buildings that are going to be taken down. It's been late getting started, but through the flood relief effort, but it still comes down to county ordinance, okay? And I'll tell you, you know, we've gone many years without a county ordinance because it's one of those things that a lot of people want changed, but there are a lot of people that say, this is my property, okay? So, you have their rights, too, and there's a competing area there. And we did discuss that a little bit in this past year, but in the long run, it does take, the commissioners have to do a county ordinance. And if enough people get behind it, the commissioners will see this, and they'll get it done, okay? But until you're just, you know, you're not really behind it, they're going to say, well, you know, we're kind of reading that the people aren't behind this so much, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. And we'll stay right there with Dr. Atkins. One of the questions, and I think this comes from our online folks, this is really cool that we get questions from that. It says, pick one project that you've personally handled and accomplished that voters should know about.
Well, I'll tell you one thing I've worked a lot on, it's been the airport out here, okay? The Sommersville Airport, when I came on to that, was, it was full of garbage, and at that point in time, the, we had a, actually had And at that point in time, the, we had a, actually had a survey where we came in and there were a lot of findings as far as things that were wrong with this. There was no fuel, the, the hangars were in bad shape, it had just been let go for years. And now, we're in, it's on its way back. It's, we went from monthly meetings in which not all the guys would show up to, to get some things done, we were going twice a month, okay? To get things done there. And, and the counties pumped some money into this because this was, this was, was just let go for years, but it's another one of our infrastructure things. And, you know, I think we have an ability here, you know, with what we have with the New River Gorge Park, to go places with this airport.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. And to Mr. Roberts, what is one project that you personally feel is important to tackle?
Didn't know the question was gonna change. So I guess I'm gonna go with the, I'm gonna go with Veterans Memorial Park. There's been a lot of effort put in down there, and that was what I was gonna tout as my own accomplishment, is being on the memorial park board over the past year and a half, year, year and a half, and all the ground that's been gained down there. That park was neglected for years. I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't, I don't do the blame game because that does nothing for, for forward progression. There's a lot of efforts going on in the park down there, there's a lot of things I think need to continue down there. That's, it's, it's the kind of the crown jewel of the county. It's, it's situated, you know, probably not where everybody agrees, but it, it's what we have, and it's a beautiful place down there. It has a lot of potential, there's a lot of people use that. And anytime I'm down there helping out, doing work, or, you know, in one of the hiring committees or something like that that I'm on, I see folks utilizing that park, and I think we need to continue on with that effort and not let it wane. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right, moving to our, to the left, to the BOE candidates. And this time, let's start with Mr. Amick. Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Do you have plans to be more aggressive in drug prevention programs since the situation is getting worse and not better? And how often do students get educated on this issue?
Well, first of all, this is very, very serious. It's, it's terrible. And some of the drugs, just, you know, peer pressure one time, and they're more or less hooked. We have initiated, like I said earlier, three new counselors, six social workers, not counting our central staff, to work with the students. The principals have set up programs in the schools about the seriousness of, of drugs. And we've got to fight this as a community. I know some churches even talk to their, their, the children in the congregation about the seriousness of that. We need to leave no stone unturned.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Let's go with Mr. Berry next.
I think it's, well, I don't think, I know it's a problem, it has to be addressed. We have put some monitors up in, in the high school that will pick up vaping. A lot of times, it's hard to track that because it disappears. But there, those monitors, they seem to be working. And if they work, we will put those in the new schools. That's one problem. We joined in a memorandum with a group against the producers of vaping material. And hopefully, that will have some effect on the future.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Ms. Kaufman?
Well, one thing that I think is really important, and last week I was privileged to sit in on our teen court that has been established and with Officer Aaron Evans and Hope Tietrick. They go in and they, they take, they let the students who have, you know, been in trouble before, or they've got caught, you know, with tobacco or alcohol or, you know, things like that at school. And so as part of their recovery, so to speak, they go and they sit as the jury. They're the attorney, like the prosecutor, the bailiff, they're the jury. That's part of, of what they have to do is, is go in and like sit on the jury, and then they are the ones that issue what's gonna happen, you know, to the student. And it, it's kind of like, I, I feel it's gonna be a deterrent.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. And we'll, we'll stay in the BOE side, but let's go to Mr. Berry. All right, so I've gotten a couple of questions about this, I'm gonna kind of fashion two of them together, talking about the Cherry River site. So the question states, why did some of the parking lot get tore out at the Cherry River site? And were there any delays at the Cherry River site for the site preparation?
Yes, a portion of it was taken out. The, after it was paved, and I think there was some miscommunication between individuals or companies. Seemingly, the pavement extended on into the flood plain area. And the city came back and they wanted that part of that removed so it would clear that flood plain, or at least back up from it. What was the second part?
Second part, was there any delays in the Cherry River site preparation?
No, not other than your regular delays you're gonna get with, with construction. There were, you know, it's just, it, it went pretty well. You know, there were times when it slowed down, but it...
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mr. Amick?
Well, I agree with Mr., Mr. Berry. I, I think the reason it was tore down, the, the extension, it would raise the water less than one-third of an inch. And it would cause problems on down the river. I don't understand that, I'm not a professional in that area. But I do know that the gentleman in charge of planning, there was a delay for, for some time. We had to work that out with the, I can't think of his exact name, but he was in charge of okaying the permit that we had to get from the city. And that was a delay.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Ms. Kaufman?
Actually, it was a flood plain manager that, I guess, determined that it was causing, gonna cause a little fraction of an inch of a rise downstream, and so they wanted, wanted that part of, of the parking lot to be taken off. But there was a permitting fee slowdown there that did cause it to be slowed down somewhat.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Okay, this question's one of those weird questions, kind of gonna be a popcorn question. And again, as moderator, I read questions, and that's what I'm going to do. So, as a taxpayer in Nicholas County, now, mind you, this is for the BOE and for the county commission, whoever would like to answer this question and take it. As a taxpayer in Nicholas County, did the taxpayers pay for the Glade Creek, or, excuse me, did the taxpayers pay for the Glade Creek property twice? Once for the county commission as an industrial park, and again, for the BOE to purchase as school property? All right, Dr. Atkins?
Well, there was some USDA money that did, did flow into this, okay? And so if you, you look at it that way, yes, there was money spent once. And, and then basically, whenever the Board of Education then bought it from there, some of that money actually went back in because they had to give it back to where they had gotten it, okay? So yes, there was some money spent twice, okay? Because it was, basically, it was sold twice, okay? And both times, it was public money.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Anybody else wanna respond to that? Okay. Ms. Kaufman?
I guess if you want to get really technical, it probably, you could say that it was taxpayer money, but this last was paid for with FEMA money, and I guess ultimately, we did pay a little bit of a portion of that, but it was distributed all over the whole country. So I don't think we really felt that here in this county.
Anybody else, okay? Mr. Berry?
I understood that Building Authority, or the, you know, Building Authority borrowed the money for that. And when we bought it with FEMA money, that was used to pay off the loan that they had on it. So basically, we got it for what was owed. At a good price.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berry. So we've covered quite a few topics tonight. Hopefully, it's been very informative to you, and hopefully, you've been able to get some questions answered and maybe even concerns being risen to the top even. So now we enter the time where we go with some closing statements. So again, each candidate, you get two minutes for that closing statement. We are gonna begin to the, from my far left and work to the right. So this is your chance for that closing statement. Again, you got twice as long, so two minutes. So our first closing statement goes to candidate Phil Berry.
Well, I appreciate all your support, and we've tried to be true to your trust. We will continue in that frame and get the job done. That's what we're here for, and we can't do it without your support. We thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Next closing statement to candidate Fred Amick.
You know, I've always been a, a team player. Try to get everyone involved to put their input in. And this board has worked very close, supporting each other, trying to look at the ins and outs. People, it's been rough. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. It has. But I see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I would appreciate your support to finish the job.
Thank you, Mr. Amick. Next, candidate Libby Kaufman.
I was told recently that we have an awesome opportunity here in Nicholas County if they will let you do it. Three months after I was seated on the board, the mediated agreement was signed to put a community school in Richwood and a comprehensive school at Glade Creek. An additional $42 million was secured by the superintendent and her team to move the Career Center to Glade Creek to complete the comprehensive facility. It only makes sense to have the Career Center at Glade Creek because it is the closest to the center of the county, and this move will give the students all over the county an equal opportunity to attend these programs. Even the adults will be offered to attend the evening classes there. Those who don't want to see this happen need to think, am I thinking about the kids and what is best for their future? Times change, and I'm a creature of habit, and I don't like change, but sometimes it's necessary. I feel that this is one of those times for our students. College is not for everyone. My family's a perfect example. I never attended college, I was the oldest of eight children. My father was a coal miner, my mom a housewife. They could not afford to send me to college. My daughter graduated college, and she even went on to get her masters. My son went one semester and said, Mom, this is not for me. They both have very successful careers now. I love that we're able to stay here and raise our families and allow the families to stay close together, I think that's what we all want. These new schools will give every student the opportunity to enhance their education as they learn a trade or get certified in a field of 16 programs at least that is geared to meet the work environment in our area. They can also receive a bachelor's degree or go into the workforce and take that degree on to further their college education. We want to keep our children here, and we want to build our communities using our own. People always tell me that I don't have quitting sense, and you know they're right. I'm Libby Kaufman, and I'm in it to finish it. Elect me for four more years, and let's finish this job. Thank you. And God bless us all in Nicholas County.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Next, candidate Gary Roberts.
All right, first off, I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to talk to you all this evening, show you I'm a little bit more than just an old bearded redneck, right? I'd like to remind you that I'm a Marine with a solid moral compass. Wrong is wrong and right is right in any given situation. We need fact-based decision-making commissioner in Nicholas County. That's not slanting in any direction, I don't care which way it goes. My Marine Corps leadership and approach to life, through that I will make the tough decisions that needed to make this county a good county and to make it move forward. I'll stand by my, my decisions, owning my victories and my defeats that arise occasionally, hopefully not too many of those. And my plan is to professionally extend the handshake of teamwork to both mayors, both city councils, my peer commissioners, the residents of the, of the community, and I want to poise Nicholas County to thrive, not just survive. I'm asking that you provide me the opportunity to serve you, the Nicholas County residents, as I did my country, with honor and respect. I appreciate your time tonight, once again. God bless our country, God bless our troops, and God bless Nicholas County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And to our last candidate, Commissioner Lloyd Atkins.
I'd like to thank everyone for attending, and I'd like to thank the people that put this on, and, and those people that are out there online, okay? They're taking their time to watch us tonight. I would like to state that it's been truly an honor for me to represent the people here in Nicholas County. As far as what we have going down the road, infrastructure is still gonna be one of our keys. We've gotta tackle the drug problem. And, and one other thing, don't forget, let's get this fire feat passed. Let's get the signatures in there and get it done, so we can all feel better at night with having a, with having a fire department here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. So again, I think tonight was more about the importance of getting information out to your guys' hands and, and so that you can make informed decisions. It's very obvious that we're passionate about the place that we live, correct? We're passionate when it comes local. We're passionate when it becomes a little bigger into the county, and then we're even, get even more passionate when you start talking about our state. And that's important because we as West Virginians need to be knowledgeable enough that when that day comes to go vote, we go vote. And we go vote informed, with information that's in our pocket, just like a Swiss Army knife, and you're able to use that. So I encourage all of you to do that, to, to exercise your right and to be passionate about the place that you live. I think that's super duper important. I want to thank some, some special people as we close, and I think it's important that we give them a round of applause. And one of those people is our Somersville Fire, our Somersville Police Department. I want to thank our police department, they've been at both meet the candidate nights, and they, they serve our community and stand in a way. So please, applaud our service department. I also would like to thank the Somersville Arena and Conference Center for giving us a beautiful venue to have our events in. You know, I think when, when you think about counties and you think, talking about divides and things of this nature, it's all about bringing people together, and it's about partnerships. And I think this place is a, man, just screams about partnerships and how we've been able to partner with, with the, the Army and, and the National Guard, and just, it's just really cool to see those partnerships come to fruition and build places like this and give us a venue to have that. So we thank all those people that are in charge of that and for getting those things done. We invited all candidates, and we are super grateful for those who came out and that participated. And I thank you for your time, I thank you for your energy, and I also thank you for getting that information out, just like we were talking about, how that is super duper important. I also want to thank all of the participation from our audience. Thank you, thank you for being so grateful and writing questions and eating all of my brownies, thank you for that. And I also want to thank those virtual people that participated. We live in a world now where we can use technology for cool things, and I, I think it's getting better. And yeah, we'll see, we'll see how that continues to grow and continues to make our community thrive. So, in closing, the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce, we build businesses, building communities. Thank you.